He could have, he could have taken credit for my career and could have hired me when he was the assistant at Eisenhower, but unfortunately, he made a poor decision. I'm kidding. But no, I've known Garrett for a long time. No, I'd like to tease him, but we're lucky to have Garrett, truly we are. We're lucky that he is well-known by the Taylorsville community and members of the staff, and we're grateful that he was willing to come out of retirement to fill this role for the interim until we're able to go through the process of establishing a new pool. So he has been there this past, actually, he was there Friday, and he's been there these last couple of days, and we're grateful that you have agreed to allow us to appoint him to be the interim principal at Taylorsville. Does anyone have a question for Dr. Muse?
I just want to say thanks. I am thrilled that we'll see his happy face again, there wandering the halls, not just on the wall, but wandering the halls, and appreciate, appreciate the willingness to come back and help that community. It's been a blow, but we appreciate your willingness, and I look forward to decorating your office in red, white, and light.
Can you tell us, Dr. Muse, can you tell us how the faculty and the students and the staff at Taylor Review or Taylorsville are doing this week so far?
You know, I think kids are pretty resilient. I think last week was pretty hard. I mean, I had one student in my office today just sit in the office for 15 minutes just because she felt the need to feel like Emmy's still there and she's with her, and I think some kids are feeling that, some that are really... Emmy, Emmy had a real connection with kids. I mean, you'd like to say you're responsible for everything, but there were things that she was better than I was. I mean, some of the things that she did with connecting with kids was very amazing, and some of the kids have a hard time with it. A lot of the kids are kind of moving, moving forward, I think, with kids. They move. Some of the faculty is struggling. I talked, you know, we've had, the district has given such great help last week. I mean, I have to tell you, there were, sometimes I felt like there were more district people than there were faculty at Taylorsville. So there were a lot of people there. The halls got clear real fast for some reason. I mean, the kids were going, but there are some teachers that are struggling, some people who came to Taylorsville for the reason that Emmy was principal there, they are having a really hard time right now. One person said, "I just don't like to be home alone because I just get thinking about Emmy," and I talked to that person today, and we were talking about it. So I think, and because the funeral's next week, it's going to continue a little bit, and then we're planning right now what we can do that following Saturday to kind of have the kids be able to come if they, you know, can all go to the funeral, and the faculty to do something more fun than a funeral, I think, you know, so you have the funeral a week from Thursday, and then, but we'll have a community more event that following Saturday, and I hope with the couple of weeks, we can kind of move forward. Kids are coming to me and saying, "Are you going to take everything down in our office?" I mean, it's, they worry about things, and I say, "We have no plan to take things down." I said, "I have no decorations left, so these are probably good for me." So I think we're moving forward. I think the teachers are able to teach. I only have one person who's still out at this point, but there are people very close. Emmy builds great relationships, so it was difficult. It was difficult for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett.
Thank you so much, Garrett. We sure appreciate it. Thank you. Please thank your wife for...
All right. We're going to go ahead and move on. The first item on our study session is calendar development process. We're going to turn the time over to Ben Horsley, Shawna Jensen, and Craig Stoffer.
I have texted Julie, and she's not responding to me, so I know she has great interest in this topic. So if she jumps on, hopefully, we'll catch that, so.
Happy to be here tonight. Craig, I'm Shawna Jensen with School Leadership and Improvement, and Craig Stoffer with School Leadership and Improvement. We're glad to be here. Craig's handing out a couple of drafts. Tonight, our purpose for being here is to go through our calendar development process and also compare it to a neighboring district's process.
So I'd just like to add something to that. You will not, well, we're passing out some calendars here. We'll explain what these, these are not actual formal proposals for this particular calendar year. We'll be using these as examples with respect to how a framework might work and function, so please don't look at these as any sort of formal request. That presentation will happen as it normally does in the November board meeting. Our calendaring committee met last night, and we still have to make modifications to their proposals, so please don't, it's a little confusing because we're overlapping the discussion of the development while we're actually developing, so I hope that makes sense.
Thank you. Okay, just to go through the process that we have, in September, we send out the general calendar survey, which I think many of you have seen, and the results have just recently come in, so we have not seen the results yet. We'll be getting that data soon. Late October, like Ben just said, we met last night with the calendar committee made up of parents and different district representatives across the district, and then come up with a couple of different drafts that we present to you later in, I believe it's the December board meeting, unless we're moving it up, right?
Oh, did I accidentally move us up?
Yeah, it's okay.
I apologize.
So December will be coming again to present the two survey options for you to look at, and then January, after you've approved the two drafts, then we send those out again in a survey for the community and staff to vote on, and then we'll collect that data, and then we will come back again in the March, February, March board meeting for you to approve the final calendar. And then after that point, we then post it on the website for all to see. Questions about our process?
So be clear, this is our current developed process, and I'd like to speak to this a little bit, because I think part of the discussion tonight is, do we want to alter that process? And so, I want to be clear, this is not Craig's process, or Shawna's process, or Ben's process. This is the process that's been developed over the past decade, 15 years that I've been here, we've been utilizing a comparable process where we gather a lot of community input before developing an actual calendar proposal. So just to give a little context, that's not just something new we started doing this year, this is something we've been doing for quite some time.
Okay, a few guidelines that our calendar must have, the thousand instruction hours, 179 school days, three end of term, et cetera. We try to keep the balance, the term days balanced where possible, try to keep a majority of our instruction before end of level testing, try to connect days off. A lot of our parents wish to have days off combined with holidays, so it's not a day here and a day there. Try to listen to all of that feedback and follow the guidelines. We try to have three minimum days of school per week, with the exception usually being Thanksgiving holiday because we have that Wednesday off usually. From the surveys that we've done, we wanted to go over the weighted averages, this was for each calendar year for the last five years, and so the green, you can see that people generally have voted for a longer winter break, that is a top priority for people. The yellow lines, which most are on long spring break, is the second highest weighted average, and then the orange would be our third highest, and you can see that one has changed a little bit over the years.
It's also important to know that the data that you're seeing, for example, for the 2020 calendar, that survey was actually conducted in 2018, so it's two years in advance, and that makes it a little bit difficult as you look at this longitudinal data. So we're going to be, right now, we've taken a survey, and we, as a calendar committee, we're creating a calendar for the 25, 26 calendar year to give our patrons much time to plan in advance.
Can I just understand these numbers a little better? Is this based on voting on a one to five scale of five is most important, one is least important, and that's what these represent, is the weighted average of those?
Correct.
Scaled?
Yeah, and we've actually had a good conversation with the calendaring committee last night, because when you look at this, it doesn't look like there's a huge difference between one or the other, but when you're actually having to rank order or prioritize your most pressing item, the difference between 3.51 and 4.09 is actually fairly significant. And so, a weighted average is a way to calculate and tabulate that. Any sort of time you do a rank order of a priority, you're going to have to determine a weighted average, statistically speaking, and I'm not a statistician, but I play one on TV, and so that's the only way I know how to explain that. So if you have additional questions, we're going to have to bring in somebody else who can explain that a little bit better. But I think what's really critical here is, somebody made mention, and it was made mention last night as well, is that perhaps our calendar, our community's opinions have not changed, and that they seek the same things year after year, and what this demonstrates is that opinions have changed on our calendars. One thing you're going to see this year, that's for the first time that we've, I don't recall us ever doing in a calendar, it was two years ago when we did the preference survey, was a preference to ending the semester at winter break, and this will be the first calendar that implements that feedback. And so, it'll be interesting to see if that prioritization changes. We can see the Memorial Day, ending by Memorial Day, that has shifted over time. When Memorial Day is at the end of the month, and it's one of the last days in May, we see that lagging feedback, that that's a greater priority. When it's earlier in the month of May, then it's not so much of a priority, and people do not want to be out by Memorial Day. So the rank order, she's indicated again, green, yellow, red, we can see opinions shifting, and based on my description of the weighted, it's changing a lot. Opinions have changed as we've implemented different types of calendars.
We also wanted to just share with you the number of responses that we had each year, so you can see that the lowest one was our COVID year, and then it's increased since then. We did have a huge response right after COVID. So we're getting quite a few responses, and we all always want to try to do whatever we can to try to increase that amount, so we get more feedback and share it with you. What we are comparing here to show you is, we wanted to compare with a district, and it's actually Canyon School District, I hope I'm okay to say that, but if not, I already did, but we are comparing our process with what their process is, and we wanted to share with you so you could think through, is this something that we want to do with Granite and come up with a specific process that kind of earmarks when we start the year, when we end the year, and when spring break is, or do we want to continue with doing our survey and looking at community feedback and having a calendar committee and trying to make that decision each year, which could potentially fluctuate the calendar a little bit as far as start time, end time, that type of thing. So looking at this, the first day of the school for grades one through 12 will be the third Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday in August. That is fixed on this particular district's calendar where ours is not, so that's what that mark represents. The next one is a semester change over grade day will be planned in January, and ours is not fixed there. It happens many times, but it didn't happen this last year, and so that's why we've changed the color of that X. The next two are checkmarks, which means we follow the same guidelines as this other district that we compare with as far as parent-teacher conferences and the two school days that are allocated for teacher preparation time or teacher professional development. Can you click to the next one? Election Day in November is a school day and will be free of all calendar activities. This is not something that we specifically say, but it is something that almost all schools try to avoid is to have any activity during that time, but it's not within our calendar creation rules, if you will, or policy. We do follow the other three. Thanksgiving break will be included on Wednesday prior to the Friday following Thanksgiving, and I think at this point, we've done it long enough that we could potentially have an uproar if we were to change that, so that is something that's pretty common now. Winter recess will be scheduled to include eight to 11 days comprising Christmas Day, New Year's Day, and two weekend days. The 25, 26 calendar is a little bit unique in that they fall on a Thursday, and that really kind of limits your ability to adjust things unless you were to try to have a school on a Monday and Tuesday, and then have a Wednesday and Christmas on Thursday type thing. So, but we follow that guideline as well, along with the fall recess will be scheduled in October. We don't have a specific time for that, but nor does the other district. And then Martin Luther King Day is a school recess day, Washington Lincoln, all of us follow those. A week-long spring break is something that we have done for the last several years. However, it's not something that we've done always, and it's not something within our policy, so we can make that adjustment if we need to, to help us fluctuate the beginning or the end of the school year. So we do have an X there. Memorial Day and Labor Day, of course, is observed, and then school emergency closures will be made up, scheduling a remote learning day. With the event of COVID, we have adjusted that quite a bit so that we try to organize it and plan ahead enough that we can do a distance learning day to be more, just along with times, but that is something that we're all doing now as districts within the Salt Lake Valley and outside.
We're ready now to look at our drafts. We have two different drafts based, made up based on the guidelines that we just went through. So if you look at both of the drafts, I've got the first one, Draft A. They all, both of them will have to start in the third week, whether it's be the Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. We've discovered recently that, last night in our calendar meeting, just for your information, on this draft, parent-teacher conferences, we have the fourth week in September. Oh, okay. And, thank you. We found out that was a Jewish holiday, and so we've moved it to the week before. Fall break, the end of the term would be on the 22nd of October with fall break following, and the end of the term, teacher contract day following fall break, so students would have a longer, a little bit longer fall break. November would be regular with our Wednesday off for Thanksgiving. Teacher contract day on December 1st, the other district also puts in two teacher contract days. Winter break, as Craig mentioned, with it being Christmas and New Year's on a Thursday, there's not a lot of options following our minimum of three days, attending three days of school per week, so that would be a two-week Christmas break, and then the end of the term would be the middle of January. Moving the end of the term to before Christmas, when we're starting that late in August, will most likely not be an option going forward. Do you have some?
No, I'm waiting.
Oh, okay. Then, so the end of the term day would be after Martin Luther King Junior Day, February, Washington's President's Day, and then conferences would be the last week with the comp day in February. End of the term would come in on March 26th with the TCD day for report cards and teacher contract day right before spring break. According to the other guidelines, the spring recess would be scheduled always during the first week of April and be a full week, which moves us then into May with the teacher contract day being right before Memorial Day. That's a day for professional learning, as you'll remember, for three hours, and then teacher planning, Memorial Day, and then school will go into the first full week of June. So now let's look at Draft D, following the same guidelines, just some minor changes. Would start two days earlier, starting on the Monday, so either the first, second, or third day in, the third week in August, starting on a Monday. You can see that parent-teacher conferences would again need to be adjusted on this one to be either the week prior or the week after because of our Jewish holidays, and so that comp day and the TCD may be adjusted a tiny bit, and that would, there would be room, even with this process of adjusting days like that, for the committee or for you to decide. Fall break and end of term, same time, TCD, same time. November would be the same on both calendars. Winter break would be the same on both calendars. Same with end of term two and the start of term three. February is the same. March would be the same, end of term. Spring recess would be the same, and just a variance between a teacher contract day in May 1st or the 22nd, and since we started two days earlier on this one, we end two days earlier, so going a few days into June.
So with that, we wanted to kind of go through this exercise of how we would have to develop calendars. You could see if we were to proceed with a more strict framework, I want to say that if you're asking the three of us what our opinion is, we absolutely overwhelmingly unanimously favor strict guidelines where we don't have to go out and do all this research and community input and read through 5,000 comments. We are totally okay with that, but it does limit the potential options for flexibility in terms of what we saw from our community surveys and what our communities have told us in the past. Communities could give us feedback in terms of the framework itself, so we could still receive that initially, but if we're going to choose to use a framework in the development of the calendar moving forward, my fear is at some point in time, that framework would not meet what the community would like as a whole, and we would be stuck, having to come back and start from scratch all over again. So we do have a process that does allow some flexibility. It does allow for a lot of work on our part, but at the same time, allows the community to provide some valuable feedback and input on the development of the calendars, and I think that's the reason we got here to where we are today with this development process is based on the value the board has placed in the past on working and engaging with our community on these critical decisions. I think ultimately, at the end of the day, I think everybody here has the interest of kids in mind. I think at the end of the day, we want to do what's going to be in the best interest of kids, not when great water skiing weather is, or some of these other kind of questions that might come up as a result of comments or questions, or can I get a longer spring break? Those things are good questions, and they go to that underlying question, but, and we're happy to answer any additional questions you might have with respect to the process or how you'd like us to proceed in future subsequent years.
My question is, how do you balance AP testing considerations with some of the other desires? So for example, a week-long spring break and a teacher compensation day or teacher contract day, May 1st, that's a lot of days off right before AP testing. So I realize that's limited to secondary schools or high schools, but I'm kind of curious what the thought process is and what the kind of protocol has been in terms of weighing that against other considerations for those days off that close in proximity to those testing dates.
Yeah, we, as a committee, we discussed both when IB testing, end-of-year testing, and AP testing and how they fall, and AP testing always falls on the first full week of May, and so it's conducted during that time. Our end-of-year RISE testing for some of our younger grades, that the window actually goes all the way until about June 9th this next upcoming year, so it affects some worse than others. There was some discussion about, for example, on calendar D, having a TCD day, oh, I thought somebody said, sorry, having a TCD day on the first could be a positive and could be a negative. The negative is, is that's the last teaching day prior to taking an AP test. The positive is that there are many of our AP teachers who conduct Saturday reviews, and they do that on that Saturday before, and at this point, they actually could do it on that first day and not have kids have to come in on a Saturday and get a full weekend off. So it seems like in every situation, there's a positive and a negative, and on the committee, we have people who have very strong opinions, and sometimes it's even hard for them to realize that their opinion is not the very best opinion, and then why isn't everybody not agreeing with me? And that's just the way we, I guess, maybe all think sometimes, so, but what you guys have all been a part of is the fact that we come back with our survey results, and they're usually very, very close with the A and B calendar, sometimes 60, 40, but most of the time, much closer than that, which means almost half of the people are going to be upset with whatever decision we make, and so that's why it's such a tough decision for you, and making those parameters more specific could make it a little bit easier. Did I answer your question, Clark? Kind of?
Kind of. I'm still kind of curious as to what those pros and cons are of those days off before. I get that there's people that have opinions both directions, so I'm kind of curious what those opinions are, what's leading you to make the decision to have that in there on the draft? Either way, it's on there on A and D for that teacher contract day, the full week of spring break, so how do you land on putting all of those dates into the calendars as they currently are?
I think to Craig's point, and Michelle Jones is sitting over here, so she can nod her head in affirmative or wave it the other direction incorrectly. Different groups or factions within the committee have different opinions on that, and the prevailing thought that we've shared as a district is, we want to maximize instruction time before testing and limit instructional time after testing, year-end testing, whatever age group that is, whether it's in high school for our AP and IB, or even RISE testing, et cetera. Not to say that that's wasted instructional time, but it loses, the value of return diminishes significantly, and frankly, after Memorial Day, we see it every year, it diminishes even quicker. But I would also present, trying to balance out some of the other opinions, we've also seen in previous years where the school year has ended prior to Memorial Day and state-level athletic competitions continue and/or conflict with a graduation date, right? And if you have a sports team that's doing well, I think we've had at least three sports teams whose graduation has ended up conflicting with a semifinal game or something to that effect, and that actually happened to my kid's high school in another district this last year as well, so it's not something that's unique to Granite. I think the bigger question for people who are wanting to extend, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my feeling that people who want to extend the school year into that first week in June really are just clamoring to make sure we don't start school so early at the start of the school year. In previous years, I mean, even just as little as a decade ago, we didn't generally take that Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. We might have gone to school all the way up to heaven forbid, the 23rd of December, but again, you're balancing considerations of the value of that instructional time as well, right? And so I think we all like to think that teaching is happening 100%, 180 days out of that school year, but there are obviously circumstances where school gets out a little bit early, or they're doing some other sort of activity that might denigrate that, and certainly holidays and these calendars play into that as well.
I'll make this my last question for now, then. Is, my understanding of your slide was that spring break being a week-long break is not necessarily a, something that has been requested or required by the board, but it has been something that has in fact happened historically over at least the last several years. Is that an accurate statement? And so why is that driven by the calendar feedback from the patrons that that has happened, or is there some other basis for that?
No, you're correct. It comes from that survey, and that you saw that that was the second most important thing that people did is that weighted, and so because of that, we've increased it, and then it, it's also, our surrounding districts have that same thing, is a full week, and so we get some pressure that way as well.
Okay. And my question back to the board is, so is our objective here tonight to decide if we want to give the calendar committee certain additional mandates, or take away certain mandates, or modify them, or what is our objective this evening?
Our objective is to decide just that.
So according to what you wrote, you said the first full Monday, the first full week in April, whereas this takes a couple of days in March and then April. Would we go, I don't mind that. I hesitate to go to that full, that first full week from the 6th to the 10th. I'd like the, this. So would we have to abide by that, or could we say? So would we have to abide by that, or could we say, you know, that it's split like that?
That's a great question, and I think for example's sake, we put these together. So whatever, if the district, if the Board of Education wanted to direct the district to pursue a more strict regimented guidance like this other district that we're using their parameters for, we could, that would certainly be something we would want the Board of Education to clarify for us is what week that would be, or potentially obtain community feedback on when that should be, when spring break should be consistently to help guide that discussion. But I think the point for us in creating two calendars is, these calendars don't look too different. There's very little flexibility when using that guidelines. That being said, there's certainly advantages to, again, there's a lot less work going into that. But Julie texted me and asked if I would read her email and review those two questions and try to respond, and I might have you guys chime in here and help me as well. But she asked two questions, and I'm going to ask, answer them in reverse order. She says, first transparency, could we be more transparent about who is on the calendaring committee? I'd also love to discuss having a member of the board on the calendaring committee. Lots of other districts have chosen, is this committee working? So I'll start, and then if you guys want to chime in with any other additional thoughts on that question. We can be transparent about who is on the committee. Frankly, it's a grandma-able thing. I mean, it's a matter of public record. We have not withheld that information. We don't publicize it either. I know that members of our committee don't necessarily withhold their identity. It's not, it's not top secret in any way, shape, or form. I frankly have not been in a situation in the 15 years I've been doing this where people have been like, I want all their names and their phone numbers. But, I mean, we're living in a weird time now, though, and civility has lost a little bit of flavor, so I might be a little more concerned about that if this was a more contentious type of an issue, but for some people, it might be. So that's certainly something we could take into consideration. I would like to point out that Nicole, our board president, is now serving on the calendaring committee. And I want to, before I turn the time over to these two, I'd point out that committee is kind of a misnomer. We have people who participate from various communities year to year, and some of those positions turn over a little bit more, but the committee really meets one big meeting. And then sometimes a second meeting, or we, if there's some feedback, we get back from the board. In previous years, we've seen where we push out an email and ask their opinions, just to make sure we're getting a flavor, so we don't have to make them come meet again. But this isn't like, every six weeks, we're getting together with the calendaring committee and reviewing these things. We do that, you saw our process, right? So it really is kind of a once-a-year thing, an hour and a half, how long did we go last night? Two hours, almost?
Two hours.
Yeah. So Nicole is on the committee now, and that's not a problem. I don't think we have any concerns. Do you guys have other thoughts about the question?
I was just going to add, we did add some members this year as we looked at the committee that we've been using to get more of a representation from each network. So we feel like the committee we have with the additions that we had come last night represents all corners of our district.
The committee also, I would point out, sorry, Craig, did you want to add something?
Well, the only thing I was going to mention is, the committee is comprised of administrators and then teachers at both levels on both sides of the valley, along with councilor secretaries, our transportation department. So really, you have all of these different views and opinions, but they're also trying to look at their perspective group that they represent, and then we have to all come up with a consensus just to come up with those two drafts to be able to present to you and share. And we're hoping to make those drafts, and we explained that to the committee, to make them different enough that we get some pretty good choices as far as choosing an A or B calendar, if you will. So we're hoping to get those two views, and at that point, that calendar committee's responsibility's done. They're not making any final decisions on the calendar, and so by being transparent, that shouldn't be a problem, I guess, for them.
That was what I was going to share, so thank you. I would just simply add, again, that work does get completed. There's a lot of voices there. I forgot, I lost my train of thought, so I'm going to stop talking.
So I, I think, to put it in very plain terms, board, what we're after tonight is, do we like having the consistency, you know, the predictability of a very rigid calendar? The requirements for that are some advantages, obviously, for predictability and consistency. However, what it lacks to me is the, is the community feedback. I like flexibility in our schedule, because as we just saw, the previous survey results from the last five years, opinions do change. And so if we have this strict, rigid, you know, requirement, number one is, you're not going to be able to, we've asked in years past the calendar committee to come up with two very different drafts, A and B, so that the public can actually see a difference. These two that you've presented tonight, just as a kind of a, a little bit of a workshop idea, right, of examples, there's hardly any difference. So I think we have to, as board members, you need to consider, and this is what I'm considering, is what do I value more? Do I value, you know, consistency and predictability for my constituents at home? Or do I value flexibility and the opportunity to be able to take their feedback, and then that can guide my vote as to which, you know, which calendar I'm going to support if we're willing to put that survey out? So I appreciate the work that's been done here. I do, you know, see a couple advantages, but I think they're far outweighed by the advantages of keeping our process open. So we value, we have kind of a, a good thing at Granite, that we value that feedback. I want to hear from the parents in my community on what they support. I want to hear teachers and students. In recent years, we've had an uptick in students actually responding what calendar they want. So I would hate to see that channel of feedback be taken away by a rigid, strict, very limiting requirements that basically dictates exactly how the calendar's going to be every year. And to me, also, you have to realize, the calendar year shifts, if Memorial Day is May 22nd, that's really early to end school. But if it's May 28th, that's, that's a, that's a full week of instruction. And so to make this rigid requirement, that's really hard to do. If we had a crystal ball and could work out all the kinks, that might be feasible. But to me, I need that flexibility so that the calendar can consider if Memorial Day's on the 22nd or the 28th, and I need the calendar committee to have flexibility dependent upon which day of the week Christmas falls. Because as you mentioned earlier, that has more of an impact than people realize for how winter break is crafted. And anyway, so those are just, those are my thoughts. I will always side with being able to hear from my constituents, give them a channel for feedback, and have some flexibility to use that feedback moving forward. That's my opinion.
Thanks, Karen. I think Kim had a comment, and then Chris.
And I would just point out, before she, she dropped off the call, but she has given me a whole list of things she would like me to share, so I will go after everybody, for Julie's sake.
I agree in that I want feedback from the community, but would like to know if we've ever asked the community if they would prefer consistency, or do they prefer filling out a survey every year and not knowing when school's going to start and just, I don't know, as a parent myself, I've wondered, like, wouldn't it be nice if I just knew when school was going to start every year and wouldn't have to always look at it changing every year? So, I mean, have we ever asked for that feedback? We're sending out surveys specifically saying, would you prefer, you know, a longer Christmas break or a longer spring break? We're not asking them, do you want it consistent, or do you want it flexible? Have we ever done that?
Not since the inception of this particular iteration of the survey. You are correct. If we went through with a more strict framework, we could literally craft our calendars for the next 10 years and publish them, and the information would be out there, and we might be able to foresee some other challenges or difficulties and make adjustments from there. And certainly, the board would have the flexibility to make those adjustments based on community feedback. It would give us the chance to put a lot of things in the, I mean, there are some advantages to that. We certainly could constitute a survey after, I would suggest we wait until after this year's calendar development process, so March-April timeframe, to talk about the calendar development process. Maybe it's something we do with district community council to get their feedback. We, Nicole solicited some opinions yesterday with our calendaring committee in light of this discussion, and it was kind of split there. Is that fair to say? I don't want to, maybe you guys have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, it was, it was interesting to hear. I did bring that up, and I just said, what do you guys think? And they, you know, they did express, it would be nice to have, you know, something that's set, but then as we looked at it, okay, that means that if you set this parameter, then we are, basically, we don't need this committee. And so I think that was a little eye-opening for them to say, oh, okay, well, maybe we do want to have a little bit more of an opinion on that. So I, I think it would be good to find out what they think and just say, you know, knowing that if we set these guidelines, we're not going to have much flexibility, and we can't, we can't change Memorial Day, so it's not that you're always going to get out before Memorial Day, or, you know, a week after or two weeks after. It will change because we have these parameters already set. So it was interesting to hear the community, though, the feedback from them.
One of the things that, and I apologize, Kim, if I'm, or it was you who asked the question, but one of the things that was mentioned was, it would be nice to have spring break always the same at the same time, and that would be helpful for vacations. But then they also said, well, it's kind of nice that we at Granite have our calendar two years in advance, and so I can plan my vacations, and it's okay to be flexible and get that feedback. So they had different views. It was very interesting how both sides' parents liked different things about flexibility and consistency, and they, what they wanted was consistency, but to be able to change it.
Yeah. And, you know...
Which kind of goes along with what my comments are. Are you done? Sorry, Kim. I was just going to say, I mean, I'm not, I don't have strong feelings personally, one or the other. Like I said, I have thought about, man, it would be nice to have consistency. Maybe it's just something the next year, when we send our survey out again, that we just add a question about that.
To that point, and we're very open to do that if the board would like to go in that direction. We used to do the preference survey that we just completed every other year. It wasn't until just a few years ago that we started doing it every year because we saw some subtle changes in people's perspectives. And we're like, oh, do we want to stick with the same preferences when people's opinions are starting to change? When we started doing, we saw some calendars get adopted where we were ending by Memorial Day, because it were a little bit later in, towards the end of May, and people either liked that or they hated it, right? And we wanted to make sure we were capturing those feelings as they were kind of evolving. And again, to that same point, as we're looking at a semester break at winter break, first time that I can remember that that will occur, I'm really curious to see how that plays out. So we could certainly design some surveys, a survey that could ask some of those types of questions and help develop some answers.
Real quick, Chris, sorry, I just wanted to add also, I know that the Thanksgiving break is dropped on the survey like the priority, and I don't know if maybe we need to talk about just even taking that question off, because the comment was made last night, well, we're just assuming that that's going to happen. So I think it's, people don't make that a priority because they're just going to, so are we really willing to take that day away? If we're not, then maybe that just needs to be taken off the survey. So, anyway.
Julie is on speakerphone now.
Hi, Julie.
So I, I have a couple, just my thoughts are, I still think it's important to have community input on our calendar, but I also would like to see a little bit more framework. Sometimes when you give too many options, you're going to get so many opinions that there is never a consensus of this is a better calendar or not. And we end up, when I was first on the board, I remember there was, you know, 50% was the average of, there was so, there were so similar people that wanted it or didn't want it. And so sometimes I think if there's so many choices, we're asking maybe the wrong things. And so I would like to see a little bit more framework with maybe an official start date. Maybe we start the third week every year in August, but we don't actually have all of the set dates, per se, the end date or the spring break that have to be a certain week, but maybe we have a starting date that's always the same week of school, just for families that go out of town or like, you know. But I think our process is, takes a lot of time, and I'd really like to see some more streamlined process where we're not doing 12 surveys on the calendar. We're having a little bit more impactful survey less often, so that we can, kind of not have to drag it out for five months or six months or whatever.
I hear what you're saying, Chris. The concern to me with the third week in August, sticking to that, is you lose the ability to end the second term by Christmas break. And some feedback I'm hearing from both teachers and students and parents is, they love having the end of first term right before fall break, and they love having the, and they're anticipating, from what I'm hearing, liking, that when you go on Christmas break, I mean, think of concurrent enrollment, it's slick, right? I mean, their, their class is done in December, and so for our kids who are taking concurrent, but their final isn't until the second week in January, and they've just had this two-week break, and am I able to retain that stuff over this long break? So I would hesitate supporting that rigid third Sunday, or third Sunday, third week in August, only because it, once again, it just takes away that flexibility. And I think that's really the core question we have to consider is, do we want to take that flexibility, that flexibility away?
So just clarifying, so we would have to start the second week of August to have us end by Christmas break.
Correct. So it goes back kind of...
So we would have to start, so to Karen's point, we would have to start earlier, no matter what, if we want that to be a priority.
If that's a priority for our community, then we are going to be starting as late, you really couldn't start later than almost the 12th, 13th, or 14th is...
We could take away fall break.
We could take away fall break and part of Thanksgiving, and we could probably...
We did that once. I will have you know, Connie and I were the only ones on the board.
No, I was there.
Oh, were you there? And I'm telling you, it was ranked low on the survey, but you take it away, and it'll be number one next year, because that was big feedback.
So you saw on the way, can you go back to the...
While he's going back to that, one of the things, in order to be able to do what you mentioned, Chris, we could actually, the board would have to approve that it's okay for us to not have balanced semesters, and as long as they weren't quite balanced, we could make that adjustment. It does affect semester classes and concurrent classes, but that would need to be the adjustment to give you that flexibility to still have the term end by then if we were to start the third week.
How many days of flexibility are you talking? Two, or three, or five? I mean, I just kind of want to...
Currently, it's over five, so...
Over five?
Yeah. Right now, it would be, it looks like it's 10 days with this particular thing, so it's tough.
What did that teacher say, the secondary teacher last night? She spoke to this, didn't she?
She said...
Yeah, we had a secondary teacher that shared her concern. Go, go ahead.
I was going to say, I have done that, too. It's hard when, once it gets past a week. It's okay to have it balanced a little bit more on the, which, I don't know if you've taught semester, but... It's okay to have it a little bit more because on the last, your last quarter, you kind of lose those last four or five days. I hesitate to go much past the week of Memorial Day because then that's two weeks that you lose, and then if you're really unbalanced, that's like three weeks that you're off from each other. And it's hard when you have so much curriculum that you have to fit in, and you have two weeks less in one semester than another. A week is doable. Two weeks is hard.
Okay. Thank you.
May I be heard? Craig's far more diplomatic than I am, but I just want to be very blunt and to the point. This seems like the suggestion is that there's a desire for more predictability by implementing some of these more rigid protocols, but we publish our calendars two years in advance. So to me, that falls short of meaningful, of a need for a meaningful change here, because we're publishing two years in advance, and with all due respect to everyone that maybe wants more predictability even, two years is a long time in terms of planning out into the future. So I'm not seeing or sensing from this discussion that there's a need to make any kind of dramatic change in our approach here.
I do have Julie on the line, and she had a couple of follow-up thoughts, and do you want to?
Yes, I know.
Okay, Julie?
Oh, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Yes, okay. Thank you for this great discussion, you guys, and I, I wanted to just ask the question of, do we know if people care about predictability or not? just ask the question of, do we know if people care about predictability or not? I mean, I'm the one who's kind of bringing up this question of predictability. And the reason why is because I'm hearing it from patrons. But that, you know, just because some people are talking to me, that doesn't mean that people care about predictability. And I wonder if we could include in our survey, we say, what things are, matter most to you, are we asking, are we giving all the right options for things that matter to people? And perhaps predictability could be something that we could begin to look at and see if people care about that. Maybe they don't care at all. So I'd be interested in gathering some data on that. And I also, while I'm the one who's kind of coming with this idea of should we start the school year and have spring break the same from one year to the next, I also am not sure that I, I, I'm not bringing, I'm bringing it so that we can have the discussion because I want to know what people think about it. I am not 100% on board with that. The reason why is because I still feel like we, we don't know how it's going to play out, this idea of starting a little earlier and ending a little earlier and having these very clean breaks at the end of term. So I, I still feel like, I don't want to just like say, we're not going to do that anymore when the experiment hasn't even ended, right? But so maybe what's important now would be for us to gather some information to find out if people care about that. And then later, we can add that information to whatever the results of starting this early, you know, this kind of new calendar approach. And it will help us better in the future to make a decision.
Oh, now I forgot her first question. I had a good answer.
Wasn't it the same with?
The question is, should we be putting on the survey, when we look at what are your priorities on the calendar? Should one of those priorities be predictability from year to year?
And I did speak to a patron at length about this after the committee meeting last night, about potentially altering and enhancing the survey. And maybe it is time to, to open that up. And I, I think we're all open to that. I don't think we're sold that it's the world's greatest survey. I, we do have excellent participation. I think that's the one thing that we're seeing is consistently, we have a lot of people respond on the survey. So I think we're very open to changing and altering some of the questions. And maybe after we get done with this semester break, quote unquote, experiment and see how that flies, maybe we're asking students and teachers and parents how they feel about that while it's still fresh in their minds. So that is something, I, I always get worried about survey fatigue. And I wouldn't want to drag this kind of survey out over multiple surveys. But since we will be surveying under our current process, families in January or February, maybe that would be a question we could add for future. To help the board guide future calendar discussions, how did you feel about the, I'm spitballing here on what that question might look like, but I'm open to that, I guess.
Ben, I also just wanted to add, back to when we were talking about the calendaring committee and having more transparency there, I just wanted to add context to that, that the reason I'm asking for that is because, it's not because I need individual people's names and phone numbers so I can call them and influence them. It's because I want to see the representation that you guys were talking about earlier. I want to see, how many parents do they have? How many district leaders? How many students? How do, you know, how many people from this neighborhood? How many people from that neighborhood? And I think that people want to see that and that that representation is, is important for us to publish so that they know that they are being adequately represented.
I can appreciate that. I think in previous iterations, when we actually present the calendar options, we had a slide that talks about the, who's, who's serving on that committee from various areas. But I think we could also add that information on our calendar development infographic. And just a breakdown, this many admins, you know, an elementary teacher, a secondary teacher, so on and so forth. And that, how many parents and where areas we've selected them from to, to serve on this committee, that's, that's good feedback. And Luke's sitting behind me, so we'll look at updating our infographic to, to include that information so it's always on the website.
I think that will be perfect. Thank you for that, Ben.
Anything else? I'm looking back on our little text thread here that we've been having.
Oh, I, I got all my.
Okay.
Thank you. And I mean, I, what I was saying is agreeing with Julie, basically. I don't advocate that we change our process. I'm advocating we should ask the question. And adding it into an existing survey is ideal, not creating a new one. I just wanted to comment on, on Clark's statement, just saying, I mean, I don't carry the calendars around with me for two years. I don't memorize them. So to me, the convenience factor is just like if I'm trying to plan something or thinking, oh, we might take this vacation, when do we need to be back? Knowing instantly, second or third week of August, whatever it is, is a lot easier than having to go search for the calendar. So I just, to me, that's the factor that people are probably looking for. But again, they may, they may ultimately weigh flexibility higher than that. So.
It's funny that you say that because I literally was just looking the other day when our family was at a family dinner and planning a vacation. And I had to Google my district's calendar really quick for a subsequent year, right? And if you looked at our data, our, Dimitri, our webmaster, would tell you that the calendar is the most, there's a reason it's placed where it's at because it's actually one of the most sought after items on, on our webpage. So I, I think that's appropriate. I do want to just clarify, we've been using that term, two years published. It's really a little less than. Because if you think about what, where we're at in this process, we do start publishing calendars and making some calendar options available. But it is October of 2023 and we're talking about this, the fall of 2025. So it's, it's a little less than. It's about 18 months, sometimes as early as 20 months when those, those options are presented for the various community. I just wanted to clarify for the public's sake.
And that being said, I, I was in a meeting the other day where somebody, we were trying to plan something for next year. I typed in Granite School District 2425 calendar. It took about 10 seconds. I clicked on it and boom, it was there. So people may have to search for it, but it's very easy to find. And it takes, it, seriously, it was less than 30 seconds for me to Google it and have it right in my hand, on my phone.
All right. Any other questions? I, I will say it was, it was interesting to get that perspective and I appreciate you guys allowing me. I didn't go in with a thought of, I'm going to sway these, you know, their opinions. I do, I mean, I did give some opinions on, as a secondary teacher, this is my, my opinion. But, you know, it was, it was good to be able to hear that perspective. So I hope, I hope okay for us to be there. And we appreciate you allowing us to have a board member there. I think that is a good, a good way to be able to bring feedback back here also. I personally am okay putting that on our, our survey and just sending it out and just seeing if parents are, you know, if that's really what they want. I, I agree, we have ours out two years in advance and far, far sooner than anybody else. And so it's really easy to work around that. And let's just be honest, do people always work around that? They don't. So.
I would just ask if, I'm fine with that question, but I want people to understand the complexity of that question and what it means.
And the consequence.
And the consequence. So I don't know how you capture that in the survey.
I just wrote a big question mark on that, on my papers.
Because, yeah, we, we've got to tease that out a little bit because it's like, oh, do you like this? They may be like, yes, I love that, the predictability without realizing all the consequences that that means. And so I would just try to, it just sounds like your honor. So thanks for thinking that through.
And I, I wouldn't even, I don't know how you guys would feel. I wouldn't even object to waiting until next year when we have the calendar preference survey. Because I feel like then we can have a, an opinion on, okay, did you like getting out before, ending second quarter before winter break? Because I think once we experience that, that will be, I don't, I don't know. Well, I guess in January, they'll, they'll have experienced it. But I don't know if they'll have a full impact.
There's some unique opportunities. And as we, I've been thinking about this, obviously, as we're having the course of this conversation. And maybe we could pull our committee back together, just to help us evaluate some survey options and questions. And they could help us be a part of that process to develop a, and enhance our survey somehow, improve it if, if at all possible, which I believe there's always room for improvement. So I'm, I'm sure that there's a number of those folks who would be perfectly willing to do so. Maybe not some of the others, but we'll see. That's certainly something we'll take into consideration.
All right. Do you have enough direction from us as to where to go with this?
I feel, what I feel like our marching orders is, are, is looking at some potential opportunities to enhance the survey without survey fatigue. Perhaps asking some questions about some clarifying consistency components with some framework in our calendars without abandoning the, kind of a middle ground, I guess. You have over here the framework over here and you have the wide open community survey dictating that and maybe finding something in the middle that would help shape future calendars. And we could certainly bring that back to another study session in, in the near, in the next, in the springtime perhaps, before we go through that process and make sure we're on the, we're moving in the direction the board would have us.
Thank you. Did you have anything, Craig? Sorry. You looked like you were going to talk.
You need to give us these calendars back so they don't get anywhere, if you would.
I'm going to publish.
Yeah, there was a reason I didn't want to show them on the, the TV screen. These are top secret. They're just drafts and they were just, again, for the public's sake, for the purposes of our study session and, and working through the concept. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on if there's no further discussion. We have up next, our mission and vision. Would you all like to take a five-minute saunter to, until Ben pulls that up? Or do you just want to power through? Okay, I guess we'll power through. I'm going to move. Is there a motion to saunter? There's a motion to saunter from Dawn.
So per the discussion we had last, last study session, we talked about our mission and vision. And I took some of this to the community council, the district community council this week. Was it this week? No, last week. Sorry. It's been a long week. And just asked kind of what direction, what they saw and what, and asked their opinion. Now, of course, reminding that this is our mission and vision, not theirs. But did want to get community feedback. So I will tell you what we shared, what I shared with them. First, just as a reminder, the mission statement, these are our definitions, how the mission statement varies from the vision statement, our goals and our core values. I did ask them, we did do a worksheet, and I did invite them to give us some feedback as far as what our goals, what, what they felt our goals should be or our core values. I guess it was core values. So I asked them that, I, I put this up there and I said, what values would you stand by no matter what? What do you value in leaders? All of those things. So these were the ones that came up. I put tick marks next to the ones that were the reoccurring ones. I asked them to come up with the lists, but I did, and I asked them to come, to tag their top three. Most groups did that, but not every group did that. So I tried to kind of take those and, and compile them. But if you can see the things that did keep coming up with them as well, as I, I think that, that some of these came up with us. Integrity, honesty, equity, respect. Every kid can succeed and motivation. I just threw that ID. I just threw that IDEA up there, just to get us thinking about things. As far as our core values, what are your thoughts? Are there any up there that you are, like, the ones that have the tick marks next to them? Do you feel like those are an adequate representation? What do you think?
Nicole, I can't hear much of what you're saying, but they are.
Good citizenship, empathy, integrity, honesty, self-reliance, time management, opportunity, equity, connection, individual recognition, character, encouragement, empowering students, respect, responsibility, every kid can succeed, caring and motivation. And then I just put one that was under, I, this was just me playing, so this is not, like, I'm not, like, married to this idea or anything, but I just did the IDEA, IDEA, increase knowledge, D, deliver honesty and integrity, E, every student can be successful, and A, all deserve respect. Go ahead, Kim.
It's a little different from the list that was in your email initially. In that list, you had academic excellence on it, and it's not on this list.
This, this is the ones from the community council.
Right.
So-
Which I didn't compare the two at the time, but I was looking at the list today in your email. And so, that's where I'm noticing, that, that was one that I highlighted, but it's not on this list.
Mm-hmm.
So do we, I guess, is that, is it removed on purpose, or is it something we can add to that list?
I, well, I didn't put our, so, the email that I sent to you guys, that was our list. So I didn't put our stuff on here, I put theirs. So they just didn't have that on there. So, and that's okay. I mean, if that's something that we feel strongly about, then we want to put it on there.
I think it's really interesting that a lot of what they have on there is more of the non-academic pieces of education. That's really interesting to me that this is coming from parents, and these are really involved parents on our community council, and respect is a big one, integrity, honesty. You know, they have academic ties, but those are really important to the parents that, you know, there's, that that's a core value to them. I thought that was really interesting.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot that they wrote those down, so I see what you're saying now. Sorry. I thought, I was thinking of, they were looking at a list and grading them, but that was, the vision statements, not the values.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, but that's okay. Any thoughts? Clark, Karen, Julie? Sorry. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. I, I mean, I can't see it, so I'm having to, like, remember what they were from memory, but it sounds a lot like it's, I mean, the, our, our kind of three pillars, are those our values already? Is it academic proficiency, social skills and dispositions, and talent development? I feel like it sounded like everything you listed fell under those three categories. And I don't know what we're calling those, I guess we're calling them our three pillars, but they sure align with these values.
And Julie, that's, I think that's a great point, as we, as we think about what resonates in terms of priority, given academics and those strategic priorities, the values and the priorities should complement each other. I like to think about it as core values are something of how we go about prioritizing academics, social skills and dispositions, and talent development. And so with honesty, with integrity, and for each of these core values, you would create, you know, underneath, I'll use integrity since it has, has four. What does integrity actually look like in the district, right? Or in terms of what is the narrative around integrity and why, why that is a core value? So there's still some work to be done in terms of definition, if the board so chose. But it's, it's how we go about academic excellence with integrity. And, and for that reason, I would, I would just also submit, typically for an organization, particularly school districts, there, you're looking for as few as five to as many as 10 core values to really make actionable. In other words, actuated in terms of ways of how we go about our work and in ways of being, and who we are when we bring ourselves to a task. So I, I just offer that as well as to say, it's a yes and to your, your comment, Julie, yes, we should see our core values complementing our strategic priorities, and there's still a little work to do around what each of those mean and how many we, we should be considering for optimal operational effect.
I guess the reason why we wanted to find what our core values are is because these are the things that should drive what our mission is and what our vision is. So if we value those, and, and I think as you look at further, and I, I gave you all the papers, the, the mission and vision that we talked about with the, the community council, you'll see that they really did incorporate a lot of these in there. So, I mean, we can, we can certainly come back to this and revisit it, but what, sorry, Kim, what was the one that you, you pointed out that we had? I know we had "Every Kid Can Succeed", and I apologize, I didn't look at that before.
Academic excellence we had, that they don't have. There's probably a couple others, but that's the one that stands out to me.
Which should be obviously a, a core reason why we assess, right?
Yeah. I think, I feel strongly about it being a core value. I think that's, that's the basic reason that kids go to school, is to learn specific academic knowledge, so.
Any other thoughts on that? All right. So let's just remind ourselves about the vision statement. We want to keep it short, maximum two sentences, it must be specific, use the present tense, keep it simple, should be ambitious enough to be exciting but not too ambitious that it seems unachievable, vision needs to align with the core values. So kind of going back to what those core values, if you see the integrity, honesty, those were the ones, equity, respect, every kid can succeed, and academic excellence, I believe, are kind of where, where they were. And then, think about it as a slogan or a tagline, is what I offered for the district community council. So, with the vision statement, I gave all of you a worksheet. Just kidding, it's this one. So, these were the ones that I shared with them, I gave them a worksheet as well. And the ones, if you look on that very first page, vision statement possibilities, those were the ones that kind of, as we brainstormed last time, those were the ones that we came up with. I tried to condense them a little bit, some that were a little bit more the same thing, we just kind of, we, I, I put two back together. The ones that you see bolded were the ones that, as I went through and I asked them, "Which ones do you like?", those were the ones that were liked the most. I will say this from the community council, and, and you guys can override, and that's okay, but they didn't love the ones that said graduation, because they said, "When you talk about that, that means it, it kind of gives it a finality. It gives it a, well, after graduation, that's it, or that's all we're doing." And it also means that any kid who doesn't graduate, we're not going to offer that to in some ways. In my personal opinion, I, that's kind of, I, I didn't, I didn't love those ones either for the same reason, also because we don't have, it's that old, that saying, "You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink." We can control what we can offer, we can control what we will give them. We will give them academic excellence, we can't, we can't make every kid graduate, and we're just not going to. That is unachievable. So if it's, it should be ambitious enough to be exciting but not too ambitious that it seems unachievable. So that was kind of their feedback. I don't know if you guys have strong thoughts about that, that you wanted to keep the ones that are talking about graduating students or have graduation in it. If you look on the next page, these were, they took some of those visions and they kind of compiled a whole thing of, this is what we liked. This is, these are some of the, the words that we liked, these are some of the vision statements that we liked. If you can see, some of the things that they really liked, they liked the idea of empowering or empower our students, nurturing, you see come up a lot, together, you know, this is something that happens together. They did really like those, Kim, I'm glad you said that, academic excellence, that was something that they consistently put into these. Building lifelong success. They did suggest, because I did tell them our current vision statement is kind of from here, anything's possible, and we don't love that, but they did say, "Well, you could just change it a little bit and say from here, all learning is possible." So, that was a suggestion that they made. So, I would like you guys to get into some groups and let's just go over this and just look at it, because I'm not getting much feedback from you right here. So, you four. Rick, will you go over and join that group? Go through these vision statements. Tell me if there's one that you guys can agree on, one that you, one or two that, that stand out to you. If you don't like any of them, what you would change, why you would change, why you don't like them? Let's, let's get this done. Let's talk about it.
And are you saying go through the second page specifically, or both pages?
Hang, hang on, Julie.
Are you saying specifically this page that the community council came up with, or both pages?
So, both pages. If you, like I say, I highlighted the ones, I think they had some good feedback as far as this is what, this is what we liked, and they did take these and just added to that. So, I think you'll see that they're pretty close to each other. So. Okay. Give you five minutes, go.
Sorry, Julie, yes?
Um, I guess, I heard you were somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Want to try this again? Want to drive us back?
A successful path, or we like to launch into something more than just being here in graduation. So, we need to work on wordsmithing.
What about lifelong success, taking it from the one that we like?
Yeah. But we were really, we really wanted to footstomp the academic excellence because we think that that honestly sets a high expectation that we're delivering every student with a quality, high-quality education.
Will you write, make sure you write that down and then I'm gonna grab it from one of you guys? Any thoughts from the other groups? Any? Yays, nays? Yeah? We're gonna have three?
I think our group struggled with defining what excellence means. And I know I shy away from it because I don't know what that means. Karen and I had long discussions and we don't know what educational excellence means, or, or, or.
I would just say, remember, this is coupled with our strategic plan. And the strategic plan identifies the metrics behind that definition. So, educational excellence means, and we've got a whole, you know, metrics of academic indicators that describe, or what our expectation might be with that excellence, is how I look at it.
Does it say academic excellence in our strategic plan? What's the wording that we use in our strategic plan?
It's academic priority.
Academic priority?
Mm-hmm. And so, as an umbrella topic, it's all things academics. And then, the specific strategies and the metrics that have been identified improvement point to what the expectation of excellence would be, and what we hope to achieve.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing is that maybe we don't need to necessarily define that in our vision, but we do need to say, we want, I mean, I think, whether we say quality education or academic excellence, academic, what was yours? I have it.
So, while you're looking at that, the narrative that introduces the priority in the strategic plan could fold that language in there, in the introductory paragraph of academics.
Can you remind us, Dr. Nye, of how graduation is folded into the strategic plan?
So, yes, we have two strategic overreaching or arching objectives. One is graduation, two is proficiency. And so, when we think about that culminating diploma, I mean, that is, if you will, although we see it as a through point, it is kind of the end of our services for families that stay with us during that time.
Right. I appreciate you using the word culmination, which I think relates back to what our purpose is, is to culminate in graduation. And yes, proficiency is a big part of that. But I have a hard time backing away from the word graduate when that is the culminating moment or evaluation for a school district is to graduate its students and to do so with excellence or proficiency, or whatever additional qualifier we want to add to that.
I can appreciate that. I do like that it's not just, I mean, that is our culminating purpose, but it is also, we want to see these kids succeed beyond that. And so, it's not just, it's not just graduation. We don't want to just say, okay, we're done, that's it. And we track that. We track, you know, what's going on with these kids beyond.
Yeah, I don't think by using the term graduate in our vision suggests that that's, that we're limiting it to that.
And I like how you guys did incorporate that, but it wasn't the focus, the only thing.
Technically, graduate means move on, move forward, right? Doesn't mean end.
Yeah, you could suggest that it's the launching point, right? But you can't get to that launching point without that culminating moment, or that culminating achievement of graduation.
I'm also, as far as the word graduate goes, the reason I don't want to step away from that is, we talk about this as part of the driving force and why we're here. And I'm thinking, if I'm like a second-grade teacher, I can wrap my mind around our vision statement for this, I'm gonna do my best job as a second-grade teacher because I'm doing my part to help this kid graduate. And so, as we're, to me, this is my personal opinion, you're thinking a vision statement, how is our vision statement gonna resonate with our families, our students, and our teachers? And if it's something that's just decipherable, easy to remember, like we've talked about, then it's actually gonna have some power behind it. Other than that, we're just writing a sentence or two and checking it off the list.
Thank you. How many times have we applauded and celebrated a principal or another educator who's come to our board meeting and referred to their students as, you know, their incoming kindergarten classes, the class of 2035, or, and so forth? And we, truly, we applaud and we acknowledge that, and we celebrate it. And how can we then somehow back away and say that that's not our purpose entirely? Thank you, Karen.
So, with your, your second one, you have empower our students to excel in academic learning and character. Instead, would you, what would you all think about empower our students to graduate with academic success and, or with, I need to be wordsmith a little. Empower our students. Help me out, guys. Empower our students with academic learning to excel, okay.
Empower our students to graduate with academic proficiency and character.
That fits into the, I mean, the proficiency fits into what we're doing with the grading, too.
I could be persuaded to call that excellence. It becomes even perhaps more vague than proficiency. But I think we're down to wordsmithing and we can get there.
We don't have to encompass everything in the vision. Remember, we also have the mission that can encompass a lot more of those specific details.
I just think excellence implies a higher standard, which we should be encouraging kids to achieve their highest potential, not just a proficient level, so.
So, empower our students to graduate with academic excellence and character.
I like it.
Concur.
Back there.
Call the question.
It's not an action item. We'll make it an action item later. Julie?
Is this an administrative direction?
A little too long, honestly. And I want to suggest, um, before we were talking about lifelong success and quality, success and quality education, I suggest that one, but change it around a little bit to say, I like having a verb, and I also think education comes before success. So, I would want to suggest delivering quality education for lifelong success.
So, just thinking out loud on this, this piece of graduation is the culmination. And that vision is the briefer of the two, generally, between vision and mission. I'm wondering if some of that language around graduation would be in the vision, right? So, if we're thinking, I don't know, lifelong success is the what? The how is the graduation piece? And vice versa, just a different way of thinking about that. I think it can be in the vision, no question. But I hear also what Julie's suggesting, and that's maybe how I start seeing it, is if graduation's not included in the vision, then it most certainly should be captured in the mission.
And I guess maybe that's where, if you look at mission statement, this is how we explain the what, how, why, why we exist. I mean, we, and maybe this is where we add the graduation piece in, if that's where we're not all on board with that. This is simple setting students up. I don't, I appreciate your comment, Julie, delivering quality education for lifelong success. I don't even think we need to say delivering. I think even saying quality education for lifelong success, or excellence in education for lifelong success could be a possibility. Any thoughts? You still feel strongly about graduate needs to be in the vision? Or are you okay putting graduation in the mission?
I like where we were at.
You still like that?
Yep.
I like graduation in the mission, personally, because if we're trying to keep, sorry, Clark. If we're trying to keep it more simple and short.
Hang on, Julie.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
I like having graduation in the mission, because that is our mission, is to graduate our students. But in our vision, we're trying to have a very concise sentence or so of what we, what we're doing. And we're doing quality education for, to set our students up for success in their life. So, I kind of like having the graduation in the mission versus the vision. Lifelong success? And throw the academic lifelong success? That's, I like more concise for the vision. That's just my thoughts.
Well, I agree, but I didn't think, I didn't think our vision that we had landed on was wordy. Can you read it again, Nicole?
Empower our students to graduate with academic excellence and character.
That's pretty short.
It's pretty short, but it's not something you're gonna roll off your tongue when you're talking to a group and you're just talking, well, we want to provide da-da-da-da-da. Or slap on the side of a truck. Or on the side of a truck. I'm just joking. We wouldn't put that in.
Academic excellence for lifelong success.
Is that where our vision is gonna go, is on our trucks and buses?
Yes, a lot of this. I mean, a lot of it is our statement or our letterhead, or, you know, things like that. So, when you think of Granite School District, you think? Anything's possible, Karen. We could.
Thanks, Karen. Sorry, Julie, did you have something else?
No, I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to, like, say that I want the, I think it's important for our vision to, for lifelong success, not in those terms necessarily, but we, I agree. I think it's really good feedback from those parents that, like, it doesn't end at graduating. I think they're right. And I do, I also, first, that graduation meeting is kind of culminating, but to have that in there. But I also feel, I'd talk. Quality education.
You're breaking up, Julie.
I see the value in this one that we're looking at with the empowering our students. So, I'm in for that one, too.
Okay. So, it sounds like we have a couple of options. Are we not gonna agree tonight? It's okay, we don't have to. But it would be really nice to take this to. So, lifelong success through quality education, or academic excellence for lifelong success, delivering quality education for lifelong success, empower our students to graduate with academic excellence and character. You guys wanted academic excellence to be in there. That was something you guys feel strongly about. I think we all, are we all agreed on academic excellence?
Can I give one more? Sorry?
No.
Graduate every student with excellence and character. Put that on your bus.
That sounds like Bill and Ted's.
I'm sorry?
That sounds like Bill and Ted's to me, like, stay excellent. His feet excellent to each other. That's what it sounded. That's just what popped in my head, sorry.
Okay. Kim, what's your thoughts? Connie, you've been very quiet. We should ask your thoughts. Okay.
If we're gonna narrow it down to just two or three tonight, I mean, I would, I do like something that's shorter, more catchy, and academic excellence for lifelong success I could go with. So, that would be my vote, to have that on the list, on the shortlist.
Do you feel strongly, Connie? Anything?
I think they're, I think the shorter ones, the lifelong, I think, I think it's good. Somewhere in this, we do have to say graduate, because that is, what else is one to feel like?
Do you feel strongly that that needs to be in our vision, or in just our mission, or both? As long as it's somewhere? Okay.
I'll put in another vote for graduate every student with excellence and character.
Do you prefer that one instead of the empower our students to graduate with?
Sure. Because it'll fit on your truck. So, I'm persuaded by the comments about it's gotta be shorter, it's gotta be able to be said by every person. So, we can get more into the details about how you get there in the mission. But for a vision statement, that can sit behind the dais.
Will you read that last one again?
So, the one that Clark just said?
No, the one right before it.
Empower our students to graduate with academic excellence and character. Graduate every student with academic excellence and character. Any thoughts, Chris?
And you don't, you don't like integrity versus character?
I think character encompasses more than just integrity. Some of the other things that we had on our core values, integrity, honesty, respect, I think that could encompass more than that.
And in the last one, you read, you read it with academic excellence or just excellence?
Clark said excellence, but because you guys said you liked the academic excellence, I think that's an important piece, so I put academic in there. Sorry, Clark. Is that okay? Karen said she liked that one. Chris, did you have a preference? Academic excellence for lifelong success, graduate every student with academic excellence and character?
I like the first one, academic excellence for lifelong success.
Julie, did you have any, can you hear that? Are you hearing this conversation?
I am not getting the fullness of the conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
So, we're kind of down to two. Graduate every student with academic excellence and character, or academic excellence for lifelong success? Do you have any strong feelings? Rich has some strong feelings. Oh.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear on which were the top two. The one with delivering isn't in the top two. The word delivering?
No.
Okay. That was just clarification. I'm not, delivering refers kind of back to some, it feels like sage on the stage, sit and get lecture, when our educational experience is more co-opted with a student and their, and their parents. Delivering feels like more of a, well, here you go, versus let's co-create, right? So, anyway, it's not in the top two, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. I can type those up and send them to you, Julie. And you can.
So, it's graduate every student with academic excellence and character, or academic excellence for lifelong success?
Yeah.
Those are the two?
Those are the two.
About academic excellence, does it bother anybody else that it doesn't talk about? I mean, all those things that are gonna be our values likely, none of those are embodied in that statement.
I guess I would push back on that a little bit, because that, those characters that we have, the characteristics of the graduate of Granite are all, I think, encompassed in that. While academic excellence is certainly the center of that, our other five characteristics all point to academic excellence. And if we're not. If we're not.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I agree with you.
All right.
Thank you. That's actually, I actually quite love that. Now that you put it like that, the idea that we say academic excellence for lifelong success, and academic excellence is the thing in the center of our, if you want to call it a target, and then it has kind of some things around it that are its major supporters. I think that's pretty powerful. And I think, I think in that case, I would, I would suggest that we consider putting somehow in our mission statement, you know, alluding to that, that academic success, excellence encompasses those things. There's some way to allude to that somewhere, I guess, in our mission, I would think, but maybe somewhere else, too.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to our mission. If that's okay.
My arm's getting tired, for the record.
So, our mission statement.
Well, somebody's gotta make sure you're recorded on, for all posterity's sake.
I just want you to know, Julie, I was holding it for the last 10 minutes.
I'm whining, I'm sorry.
All right, so mission statement, just, just a really quick reminder. Do keep it short, concise. Don't write an essay. Do think long-term, but keep it in the present tense. Don't make it too limiting. Do find out what your stakeholders think. Don't be afraid to change it. The mission statement should explain the what, how, and why your organization exists. That's what I shared with them. This is what I shared. This is our current Granite School District mission in partnership with the community, enable and enrich all students with the knowledge, skills, and character needed for lifelong success and responsible citizenship in a changing world. This was, was one that I suggested, just kind of going with what we had talked about at our retreat. And then, I gave it to the district community council. They actually liked a lot of this. There were certain suggestions, so if you want to turn to that page, the mission part, and I need to come grab that page, because I left it. So, the suggested changes to the mission statement, instead of starting with Granite School District, one of the groups said to start with empowering all Granite School District students. Or another group suggested, I apologize, this looks very weird. This looks very confusing. So, I'm gonna walk you through it. So, empowering all Granite School District students to achieve their highest potential. Or one of them suggested Granite School District strives to empower students to achieve, or the way that it's written, Granite School District empower students. I don't know if you all feel very strongly about any of those. Do you feel, is there any thoughts on that, that beginning?
I like starting with empowering Granite School District students.
Rich, did you have something?
Would you mind reading the one that has the word strive in it?
Granite School District strives to empower students.
I prefer the word will versus strive.
I feel like that was very, yeah. So, instead of, instead of strive, it would be Granite School District will empower students to achieve?
Yes, in terms of a wordsmith, not necessarily voting for one or the other at the moment, but, but I think it would.
I think it's more of a strong, it's a strong verb.
It is. It's more definitive than, than.
Strive.
Yes.
I think strive makes too many holes.
Julie likes empowering, starting it off, or do you all like Granite School District, starting it off? What are your thoughts on that? There was, I just, I will put this out there. There was that one, the second one down. They're working together to empower students. This is a shorter one, where they felt like they could take out some of that stuff by saying, working together to empower students to achieve. So, we did, I did put that one in. It was not one that I could edit in. No thoughts? Julie is the one that has the most thoughts on that.
I'll just say, I, the current, the current is what's currently published. I don't see a need for change to that.
You like that one?
Yep.
Do you all feel like that one encompasses what we want?
I think it already accomplishes exactly what we're, what we're talking about here. The next one down is just more wordy. I think it accomplishes what we're after.
It doesn't talk about graduation in there. Do you want to put graduation in, since you?
If it's already in our vision, I don't know that we need to do that, but, but you could, you could easily add, in partnership with the community, enable and enrich all students to graduate with the knowledge, skills, and character needed for lifelong success and responsible citizenship in a changing world. So, yeah, I'll suggest just add, to gra, yeah. Not even to, just in partnership with the community, graduate, comma, enable, no, excuse me. It is, enable, let me start again. In partnership with the community, enable and enrich all students to graduate with the knowledge, and then continue on from there. So, I'll amend my prior statement and say, yes, let's add to graduate in there.
I do like that the existing one, we've talked early on about the importance of responsible citizenship. And so, that hasn't been really focused on, but I do, I do like the inclusivity of, hey, we want to graduate these students and give them lifelong learning and set them up for success, but they also need to be good citizens when they leave our K-12 community. And, and so, I.
And if you skip down to the bottom of the suggested changes, I'll just point this out, the community council, they, instead of saying responsible citizenship, they said that's kind of vague. They wanted something more like engaged citizenship, or contributing, or an active citizenship, instead of just a responsible citizenship.
I just read the second one that you, that is written on there, that's shorter, and I like that one a lot. I think that's a really great one. And I really love the idea of engaged citizenship, or active, or contributing.
I'm gonna disagree on that. I think responsible is the right word, because there are different ways to demonstrate engagement and citizenship. And not everybody's gonna be contributing in the same way. Some people can contribute by, by doing and behaving, and other people are gonna be a little more outgoing and contribute in different ways. So, I think responsible is the right, the right wording, personally. The folks who attend district community council are very engaged citizens. You can be an engaged and responsible citizen, and you may not be able to attend district community council meetings for a variety of reasons.
Well, maybe that's what, I think that's what they were saying, is that they wanted it to be more like engaged, that we are engaged, that we, you know, rather that means that, okay, we're all gonna go, you know, we're registered to vote, we're going to be actively involved in that. What does a responsible citizen, I don't, I'm just telling you, that was their, kind of their feedback. I don't know if you guys, anybody else has thought on that?
I'm not married to engage or any of those. I prefer them, but I'm greatly responsible, too. I think it's also a great word, so.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Kim?
I was just gonna reinforce what you already said, that their feedback was specifically, a responsible citizen pays their taxes and, you know, doesn't speak. But an engaged citizen participates in the process. You know, like, gets out and votes and pays attention, and that's why they felt that made a difference.
I understand that. I think, I hear what you're saying, you know, Nicole and Kim. I also hear what Clark is saying. It's very interesting just how different families are, different cultures, family cultures are. I grew up with a family that voted, that's all. I mean, they were responsible citizens in the fact that I was in elementary and my mom was working the little election poll, and I thought it was really cool, to wave hi to her during that day at school, you know, at Hillsdale Elementary. And, hey, Mom, you know, how are you doing? I'm just helping here with the election. So, I grew up with responsible. So, I grew up with responsible citizenship-loving parents who were not engaged at a high, high level. And then I marry into a family that is very much engaged, and you know what, I have equal respect for both of them. And so to say that you're less of a responsible citizen, just because you're not showing up and, and, and doing public comment, or filing to run for office, I, I think we gotta be real careful to not, um, make that kind of a statement. I also think of responsible citizenship as, you're gonna obey the laws of the land, you're, you're just, you're going to be lawful abiding citizens, um, law-abiding citizens, and so I think we gotta be a little careful to say that engaged, it's, it's vague, what is engaged to look like, whereas responsible, everybody can be responsible. But I don't know that it's our job to tell families how engaged or not engaged they should have to be.
I'd agree with that, yeah.
I, I think when you showed us the, uh, words that you had up there, I was very surprised that responsibility didn't have any votes, so I do like the word responsibility, because I think that's a, a strong enough word that, that all of us need to be responsible for many things.
One last plug for responsible citizenship, and it's in complete alignment with state statute regarding the purposes of public education, uh, it repeats that at least two times in the code.
So it's been suggested that, um, we keep the original one, add to graduate, Julie has liked the second one down, working together to empower students to achieve their highest potential by fostering safe, inclusive, and innovative learning environment to inspire lifelong curiosity, critical thinking, and responsible citizenship. Do you guys, are we in the, the keep the regular, keep the same one, or do you like the second one down there, the working together one that is on the sheet?
Between the two, I prefer the first one, but I'm still contemplating tweaks to that one.
I, I'm with Kim, I think I favor the first one. I, I, I like how it's skills and character, we're talking about that in our, in our, um, I just forgot, strategic plan, thank you, what time is it? Um, so I, I do like using the word skills and character.
Concur on the first with the addition of to graduate all students.
Okay. Kim, um, Chris, do you have a?
I'm not sure what we're talking about when we say the first.
So the, the current mission, the current Granite School District mission reads, in partnership with the community, enable and enrich all students, and we've suggested to add to graduate with the knowledge, skills, and character needed for lifelong success and responsible citizenship in a changing world. That's what, it sounds like a lot of people do still like.
Do we need in a changing world, or can we just end it?
The, the people who are saying, they like the first one, they are saying they like the one that's currently in place.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we strike the last four words?
Yeah, we could if we wanted.
And just end it at responsible citizenship, Clark?
I don't know, like, enable.
Do you like that, okay, to strike?
I mean, enable and enrich all students with knowledge, enable, I don't know if I love that, I'm just trying to.
Instead of enable, would you like to say empower?
Yeah, I'm thinking switch something, what did you say, Kim, sorry? Nicole stole the word from my mouth, yeah.
Do you want, do you want it to be empower and enrich, or just empower?
Yeah, I like that better, empower.
Empower and enrich?
Or, let's see, in partnership. Uh-huh, I don't like how it says enable, I don't.
But it feels like enabling.
Yes.
I can get behind that and striking the last four words.
And in a changing world, I think is unnecessary.
Okay, any other thoughts? So Julie, did you hear that? They kind of, they like, um, so this is how, it's our current mission statement, but we would change it to, to read, in partnership with the community, empower and enrich all students to graduate with the knowledge, skills, and character needed for lifelong success and responsible citizenship. Yes, Rich?
Is Julie gonna weigh in first?
Julie's gonna think about that, right Julie? And then after Rich talks, she'll say something.
Yeah, let's do that, that's my thing.
And I'm not trying to wordsmith the first to be more like the second, but there's, the word community is, is important, but what I like about is parents being pulled into the partnership, that's not explicit in the first. So in partnership with the community, how might that read if? Yeah, I, in, in some level, community.
Well, they, and they, the district community council pointed out, we didn't really have students in there, or, in the original, the suggested one, where educators, parents, and the community, and the students weren't involved in that, and so they said, parent, or the kids should be part of this too. So that's where they came up with working together, so we could, instead of in partnership with the community, we could say, working together, we empower.
Yeah, or in partnership with, with parents and the community, we will enable and enrich all students, so the student part's still there, I, I hope, when it says enrich all students, so in partnership with the, with parents and the community, enable and enrich all students with the knowledge, skills, and character needed for lifelong success and responsible citizenship. But, I mean, this is the boards, and so I wanna, I wanna give deference clearly to the board and your mission statement, I just, uh, would be remiss if I didn't at least point out, that partnership is, is more with the parents than it is with the community, although, the community does play a role clearly.
I like that addition.
Somebody did suggest not saying parents, because it's not always parents that are the ones in charge, and they did say families, say, can we say families instead, which I think is a fair, and that's why they either said working together, or they said, um, where families, educators, and the community work together. Because families can look very different.
Yeah, I think that, that was a, a careful distinction that we received feedback on. Yeah, in partnership with families and the community, we will enable and enrich all students with the knowledge, skills, and character needed for lifelong success, responsible citizenship.
With families and the community.
We will empower and enrich all students.
Okay, so, in partnership with families and the community, empower all students, or we will empower?
I mean, is the mission more of a slogan, or is it an actual complete sentence? Because then we should include we will, if it's a complete sentence.
Probably more a complete sentence, we will. So, in partnership with families and the community, we will empower and enrich all students to graduate with the knowledge, skills, and character needed for lifelong success and responsible citizenship. John's good. Clark's good. Julie, did you have any additional thoughts?
Um, I am liking it, and, um, I just, Clark mentioned the idea of adding graduation in there somewhere, I just wanted to pull on that thread a little bit.
Yeah, we added it to empower.
Like that idea, if you can figure it out, but where would that go?
We added it to the first part of it, where we said empower, we will empower and enrich all students to graduate with the knowledge.
Okay, yeah, I love it, I'm all in, I like it.
Okay, we like it, we like it. I think we like it, we're not voting because this is not an action item, but, Kim, did you have an additional thought?
Just a comment, I, I like where we've come. If we have additional comments after tonight, is that still okay to send those? I mean, I'm still contemplating one or two words in there, and so, don't wanna say with a hundred percent, I'm not gonna have any more comments, but I do like where we've come.
We haven't, yeah, this is not a vote, so we will bring this back as an action item, I, I would imagine at either November, December, well, not November, probably December.
Okay, just, just reserving the right that I may have a little more to say.
Okay, alright, good work.
Nicole, is there any more feedback that we are planning to get on this?
Um, I am going to talk to, um, our teachers through GEA with, um, I get to talk to the ARs in a couple weeks, so I'd like to take this to them and just tell them kind of our process that we've been through with this, and, and give them the ones that we've been looking at, um, and then, I think ultimately, I mean, ultimately it is still our mission and our vision, and our, our core values, but we do wanna get definitely feedback from our stakeholders, so.
We have more than the.
I'm wondering if we could also, um, send out the, maybe something similar to what you, the worksheet that you had at district community council, and I guess we'd have to update it, to the student government teachers at the junior high and high schools, and just, you know, offer them, like, hey, we'd love to have your feedback if, if you can fit it into your day by this date, and just see if we can get some student feedback from those.
I was gonna ask if I could come to the, um.
SBOs.
The SBOs and talk to them as well.
Yes, it's coming up.
I just know, GEA is our largest association, but we have others, so I'm a big believer, if you're going to GEA, you need to reach out to guests by GAOPE, um, I, we've, we've gotta be fair.
Yeah.
Because secretaries need to have buy-in, our classified worker, our, yeah, or, sorry, our ESPs, um, they need to have equal buy-in, because, so we've gotta make sure, I'm also wondering if potentially we can, trying to, I'm struggling, I, we had DCC, but how do we get parent feedback? Because DCC, there's parents there, but not very many compared to.
So they asked, that's, no, that's a great question, I think you cared for that reminder. I, I mentioned GE because I do have an appointment with them, I don't have with the others, but we can certainly reach out and make sure that.
I'm just saying, if we're meeting with one, we gotta meet with all.
Yeah, um, bless you. The district community council asked, well, what are we gonna do from here, and I said, well, I, I think what we need to do is, as a board, we need to come to a, kind of a consensus as to where we are, and then offer that to our community councils and have them, allow them to, um, give us some feedback on that as well.
And then will you circle back with the board and the report, when you meet with these different associations, what their feedback is?
Yeah.
Send us a report on each one of those meetings, thanks.
We're good? Okay. Alright, I don't have, um, any fancy presentation or anything with the board handbook, you all have had that sent out to you from, uh, a few weeks ago. Um, these were changes that, oh, thank you, these were changes that we made, um, during our, during our retreat, uh, did you, did anybody have additional comments or questions? I know Karen had one.
I, I do have an additional suggestion, would you like to flesh out feedback on the exist, on the proposed ones right now first? Okay, then I'll reserve my comment.
I obviously don't know how to use an apple.
And we do excuse Board President, if you don't mind, Doug Larson, who's, who's out of town at the moment, I will take notes on any feedback given regarding this, and, um, make sure that we incorporate those changes in a, a future draft.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Alright, so, um, is that a one? Okay, sorry. There it is. Yes. Either that or you need to, let me borrow your glasses. Um, alright, so these were the things that we, we changed, um, the board adopted a change in responsibility, and a change in, the board has adopted a charge and responsibility, um, we will put on, it's still missing, obviously, our mission and vision, which I know was, was part of it that we hadn't put in there. Um, do you all, do you, do you want to just, Clark, do you have anything? Can we just go person by person?
I have nothing, based on the red lines provided.
Okay, Karen, did you have anything other than your other comment? Chris?
Nope.
Kim?
And are you asking about the whole thing, or just this piece?
Let's just go through.
I did have a couple, just two, um, one on the change on page three. Give me a second, because I wrote it down in my email, I said page three, but I'm not seeing it in the, on the actual page three of the document, but there's a section that talks about, if someone helped me find it, it says, wording basically that the board should rely on the data provided by the administration and staff to make our decisions, do you know where that is exactly? I may have put the wrong page number on there.
It's page four, and it's underneath number three on that page, the first number three, um, principles of board, board governance.
So I put page three, and it's just number three on page four. Um, I just didn't, this wasn't my section at the retreat, but I, the way that language sounds to me is it's saying we, you know, administration and staff give us data, and that's what we should use for all our decisions. It's limiting to me, it's saying we have to listen to everything they say, which again, we, they provide valuable information, but I don't like how it's limiting, saying that's the data we should use, we should be allowed to also research things on our own. I just don't like the wording for that reason.
And, and can I just offer maybe some clarification on that, as we're talking about, we're, we're talking about the continuously evaluates the progress, and so I think the data that they are, that we're talking about there is data that we are collecting from our schools, and that's the data that we're relying on, because that's the data that we need to know, okay, how many do we have that are proficient, how many that are, you know, that's, I think that's the data that it's referring to, I don't think it's limiting, like, you can't look at other things as far as that, but the data provided to us from, from our district, that, I'm just offering that, is that correct, Rich?
Yeah, so I'd be able to, in, in terms of an adjustment, because I think data comes, and that's why I hear you saying, or remember Chandler, and data comes from different places, right? And, uh, perhaps if you just, uh, strike from administration and staff and have it read, the board should utilize data and rely upon such data to make informed decisions regarding the progress of the district, I mean, because that's the, that's the sub, heading the board continuously, continuously evaluates progress, um, and really, I, I think as a discussion during their retreat went around saying, hey, how do we move from some of the anecdotal, or, or some things hearsay that we hear about progress, and move more to the quantitative and substantive, um, points of evaluation, evaluating progress, and so it was just further emphasized that data ought to be used in, in making some of those determinations, but if we strike, uh, from administration staff, I think it's implied that we will bring, um, data, you'll evaluate it, but it's not the sole source, and that's why I hear the kind of concern, it's not the sole source, sometimes of data, uh, just from administration staff, and come from other places too, perhaps.
Does that, the, the suggested change, does that satisfy that clarification?
I think it would, if others are okay with that, that was, you know, just, was my concern, is limiting, saying that's the only source of, we can get information from.
Sure.
Um, and then, page 12. I remember discussing substitute motions and whether those require a second, and I don't think we added that, any clarification on that in? I know that was a question that I specifically had, and it's not answered in here, and so I, I don't see it being addressed.
On, sorry, on which one?
So, it talks about being able to offer a substitute motion. Which number is it, I'm sorry?
Are you looking under five? Oh, is it under? A, like an action item, is that what you're talking about, Kim?
Yeah, under five.
So like where it says on A, all action items on the agenda require a motion and a second, are you saying right there, we would want to put in? Is it on E, the before a vote, on a main motion is taken, business can be interrupted by a motion to table the motion, to postpone action, to refer the motion for their, for their study, or to withdraw from its consideration? or to withdraw from its consideration? The subsidiary motions must be dis-
Yeah, I think it's D that I was looking at. Yeah. So if you, a motion is on the table and then an amended or substitute motion is made. It just says it can be amended, but it doesn't specify if that amended motion needs a second.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
I think that just needs to be added, because in A, all action items require, so if there is an amended motion, it still is a motion on the table that needs a second.
Yeah. I believe all motions need a second.
Correct. So I think we just need to clarify that in the verbiage there.
But if it's already been said in A, does it need to be said again?
Does it need to be said again? That's what I'm wondering also.
So do we just add on A then, all, all motions require a second? Or all action items-
I believe an amended still needs a second, because the motion is changing.
So.
I don't know where to write that, but.
But that's why I say, can we just add it in to, on A, all action items on the agenda require a motion and a second by a board member?
It does say that already.
Can it say all action items, or all action and amended items on the agenda? Well, it's not on the agenda if it's amended.
An amendment is still part of an action item, isn't it?
An amendment is still a motion in a sense, right? So, yeah, I guess that can work.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Todd, our parliamentarian, let's say ye.
So we're talking primary and underlying motions, so 5A identifies that on your agenda, you have items that are identified as action items. And it feels as though A is saying, if you have an action item on the agenda, it will require a motion, a primary motion and a second. When you get down to D, that's not your primary motion anymore. Now you're, now you're down to secondary motions, which is a motion to amend or to substitute or something like that. And I think it is helpful, I don't think it's repetitive, but it is helpful that if a second is required, that it should show up in letter D as well, because it's now your secondary motion.
Yeah, we were in the group talking about this at the retreat. Yeah, and that's why it was on my mind. We did talk about that and that, I thought it was helpful at the time too, so, yeah. That's what I was getting at, if we can-
Okay.
Add it in. I don't think it hurts anything, just clarifies.
So can we maybe ask Doug to recommend? Because I, I think if it does need to be added into other ones as well, if that is, because you're right, that does say all action items on the agenda. So that kind of does limit it on A. So does it get thrown into five, the paragraph on five, to have clarity? Or do you just throw it into D?
I think, I think D is the best spot for it. It's a good catch, Kim, because that was, I do think it needs to just simply be out of there.
How about a motion may be amended and seconded, with votes on the amendments being taken before acting on the original motion? That's, that's the and second in part that I'm still struggling with. I'll work on it. I can get with Doug too.
I think we're on the right path. Let Doug wordsmith it like a lawyer would.
Yeah.
We'll be in good shape.
We'll let Todd and Doug fight it out. Okay. Thanks, Kim.
Yep, that was all I had.
Okay. Connie, did you have anything? Julie, did you have anything?
No, I think, when I read the board book originally, I, I mean, you know, I think it looks really great. We ought to laminate it. Get that thing published. I couldn't follow all of the conversation that well, but I'm sure, you know, so let me know if there was anything controversial said. Otherwise, I'm pretty sure I'm good with it. Thank you.
It's all controversial, Julie. Okay. Sorry. All right. Oh. Go ahead.
I do have one addition, and maybe this fits your mold, Julie, I don't know, as far as controversial. I would love to see, and I'm not sure where, so this would be kind of up to Doug to see where this fits. Perhaps Board Member Code of Conduct that's on the screen now. We are all elected by our individual constituencies. We have seven precincts east to west, and so specifically, I answer to the constituency of Precinct Six, with my 13 schools that are located within those boundaries. And at the same time, we, we are tasked with representing the best interests of our entire district. So we are the biggest ambassadors and representatives of our district. That being said, I would love to see added something to the effect of, if a board member is visiting a school, not in their precinct, that they need to schedule all visits through the board member whose precinct it is that they want to visit. So for example, if somebody wants to come visit one of my schools, I would like that board member to call me, explain why they feel an interest in visiting one of my schools, or if there's a question that perhaps I could answer, or a visit I could set up that then answers the question, or at the very least, have the opportunity to set up that visit in a time that I could also attend with that board member to go together. Because we are fierce advocates of our school. We know our individual schools the best. And we also feel an allegiance to represent them. And we want to be seen in our own schools. We want to know what's going on in our own schools. And this is just selfish, but I don't like finding out after the fact that somebody has set up a visit in one of my schools, because they are stepping on my toes. They're stepping on my ground. And I want the opportunity to communicate beforehand with them. I also think we have to be careful as board members, that when we do visit other schools, even though our attentions may be awesome, you know, we're finding something out. We're answering a question. We've been invited there. Whatever it is, an unintended consequence of visiting a, another board member's precinct without that board member's knowledge is you have to think how you're making your colleague look. That you're in their school and they're not afforded that opportunity to even know that you're there to join you. So I would love, not sure the wording, but just something in the Board of Conduct that we have the courtesy of working through that board member to visit one of their schools and provide them the opportunity to set up that appointment at their school. They know their principal the best. They know their teachers walk in the halls. And so I would like to see something there, because I don't like when board members visit my schools without me knowing.
Okay. Chrissy, you have a comment?
Yeah, I can appreciate that. And I think maybe it can say something, maybe we can have something that says something like, I will coordinate with the precinct, you know, the board member whose school lies in that precinct or something like that. I can appreciate that.
Do you, do you all feel strongly that it needs to be scheduled through the board member? Or, I feel, I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that I personally care that I have to schedule it, but I do appreciate, like, hey, I'd like to go visit this school. Are you available or would you like to go with me? And at least, you know.
Yeah, and I think what I'm getting at is when I, if I'm the one scheduling it, then I'm going to be putting forth times where I can go. You know, that's conducive to my schedule, so. And I have a pretty decent relationship with the principal, so it's just easy for me to say, hey, me and board member so-and-so would love to come and visit XYZ for this purpose and do that. But if others feel strongly against that, then that's fine. My bigger concern is just communication between ourselves and, and being courteous and kind and thoughtful enough to not, just be self-aware that when you show up at another board member's school and you haven't even communicated that, you're not making your colleague look very good and I would love the opportunity to join you.
Concur. I think it's a common courtesy. And I don't know that it necessarily matters who ultimately schedules it, but the board member should be afforded the opportunity to offer times and availability in scheduling the appointment.
Okay. So before, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Julie.
I, I, I love this idea and I want to encourage people to be in my precinct. And so I do not want to be responsible for scheduling that. I, I do want, I do appreciate the heads up, mostly because I'm super excited that they're in my school, right? I think that there's another complication, two other complications to that. One is that it, I don't, I, I would love a list of who, you know, who, which schools are in whose precinct. Because I'm often doing that. And then there's also the complication of, you know, I, I'm on the very end of the district and I, I only have one neighbor and that's Clark, so he and I have a lot, we have some schools that we both share. And so, you know, I, I could see somebody calling me and saying, hey, can I come to this school? Can I come to Crestview? And then forgetting to loop Clark in, when he would also want to know, you know? So I, I think there's another little complication. And then the last thing I want to say about it is, I really think too, that it needs to be something that we consider as a courtesy that we do for each other. Not that we're asking permission or getting permission. And I also just want to say that when, when I have not been good at this, I appreciate that people have been really kind. I've tried really hard when I've been in other schools to let people know, but I know that I have also been deficient in this area, so. I, I appreciate that we look at that courtesy both ways, that when we aren't perfect with it, we're, we're helping each other get better.
I would have a clarifying question. So when you're saying your schools, you're talking specifically along boundary, precinct boundary lines. I guess what I'm getting at is, in my precinct, I have nothing but elementaries. If I ever go to visit a junior high or a high school, I'm in somebody else's precinct. So you're including those in your, you know, if I was to go visit Granger High, I would reach out to you. If I was to go visit Matheson, I would reach out to you.
Like feeder schools is what you're talking in?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Kim, I think where we butt up against each other, and you actually do have Westlake Junior High in your precinct. It's not housed there yet, but it is in your precinct. Because you are north of 35 and I'm south of 35th. So I think-
I don't think it's in mine, but we'll look at the-
Yeah, we'll look, anyway. But yeah, I mean, high school is a little bit its own character, because we do share Granger High. Like, I consider Granger your school as well as my school. But I think when you're getting into some of the elementaries that are dead center in my precinct, it's like, yeah, that, that's more central. And I don't think you have to ask permission. I think it is more of a courtesy and an awareness, just, you know.
I was gonna say, that would be, because Connie now has Taylorsville in her precinct, but I'm there all the time, so do I need to call her and say, Connie? I'm going over to see my daughter's play, you know?
No, so that's, that's a good question, Kim. Like, and it's not that we're gonna just say, no, you can't go. Well, that's not my right to say that you can't go. I'm just asking for a courtesy of a heads up that perhaps I can join you. Because if something's interesting you that much to get into one of my schools or our shared school, then shouldn't we both be educated on that? You know, if something's going down at Granger, then, yeah, I do want both of us there, with both eyes. We have both set of eyes.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I'm only clarifying, because I'm feeling like if I was going to slip up, that would probably be where it would be. Hopefully I don't ever, but.
No, and it's not, this, I'm not meaning to be punitive. I don't want this to sound like negative, nelly punitive. It's just, things have happened where, you know, I have like three other different board members visiting, we had four board members visiting the same school. Happened to be an elementary dead center in my precinct. And I thought, you know what? Do we need four board members getting the same feedback for one classroom? Or should we spend our time more wisely and go our separate precincts in different schools and then gather that feedback? So to me, I'm sitting here thinking, do we want four board members giving the same feedback for one area? There's a reason we're spread out. There, there's a reason that we represent different constituencies, is we all need to prioritize the feedback from our own community and then come together. So that's kind of a little bit what I'm getting at. But I don't want to make anybody like scared to set foot in my school. No. They're all our schools. I get it. I understand it. I support that, actually. I just would really like knowing ahead of time who's planning to come my way.
I, I appreciate that. I, I do, I, I feel like we do need to make sure we're clear on this, because like, for example, you and I share Truman. I have the bulk of the boundary in my precinct, but you have the school. So is that like, do we want to, just clarify with the precinct? If the schools reside in somebody else's precinct, is that how we want to clarify it?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know that it needs to be that specific. I think all along our borders, it's like what Julie said, Julie and Clark share schools. And I share, I share Truman with you. I share Granger with Kim. I share Hunter High with Chris. I mean, I can go, I'm the crossroads. I have four networks in my precinct. If you draw the map, draw plus, there I am. And so I'm constantly going to be sharing schools. So I don't know if we need to define that or just kind of, you know?
Just maybe more broadly, which as a common courtesy, in, when visiting schools in other precincts, please contact the board member and offer, you know, before scheduling.
And you can make those arrangements. I'm like, Kim, you don't need to call me when you're visiting Granger. You, you know what I'm saying? I mean, board members can have those individual conversations as far as how to handle their, the periphery, let's say, of your precinct map. I think it's very fine to, you know, like I said, I, if you went to Truman's Community Council and I was there, it's like, hey, hey, Nicole, you know? But, yeah, so I just, I would just, my biggest thing I want to point out is just be courteous and just give other board, that board member a heads up. That's all.
Julie just missed all that. Would you mind re-stating that?
No.
Rich, you had something, and then I think Kim had something.
She got most of it.
I think, I think I got the gist.
Go ahead, Rich, and then Kim.
Okay, so just for clarification, I'm adding a number 20 to Board Code of Conduct that says something to the effect of, board members will notify other board members before visiting schools that are located outside of their precinct. Because it's not so much about the physical location, school, if the boundaries, and I've heard said, are within the precinct, then certainly visit the school, even though it's not residing necessarily in the precinct, but the boundaries are, right? So I, I think something to that effect.
And maybe even with shared boundaries, a, a pre-arranged conversation or a conversation can be had about how to handle shared boundaries or?
Yeah.
But that's not inclusive of the invitations that all of us get to something.
Sure.
Yeah, like these thank you Thursdays that have us going all across the valley, representing our teachers. I mean, I think this, I don't remember where we're going Thursday, but, anyway. I, I think if it's something organized by the district, that, that's an exception to the rule. This is, this is a single board member wanting to visit a school on their own, outside of any formal program, formal recognition, formal invite. That's a good, I don't know if we need to say that in the clarification, maybe? Or if it's just, if we understand, I don't know.
A lot of us go to the school plays or the, or concerts or games or whatever.
See, but I'm talking like specific visits. I'm coming to visit your principal. I'm coming to visit this classroom. I'm coming to visit your faculty.
It's more specific, like, yeah.
Site, site visits.
Site visit or?
Specific for?
I, I don't know how you want to label it. I'm, I'm open to, I'm open to ideas, but I'm just trying to capture the gist of the courtesy when visiting during school hours. You know, which takes away the whole musical, I mean, we're all over the valley when it comes to musicals and concerts and stuff like that. No, that's a good clarification, Connie.
Kim, did you have something else?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. So we'll add that in. Is there any other thoughts before we wrap it up? Okay.
So, Ben, can we get a list again of which schools are within the, which boundaries?
Yeah, actually, we have on our School Community Council, we have a, we have a drive for our principals and our school community councils, and in that has a list of all your precincts and all of your elected officials by school and sorted, so that they know to, because they should also be reaching out to you. So we'll just use that list in reverse and we'll make, we'll get you guys a copy of that.
And could we even, on the board page?
Yeah, we could add that.
Could we add that under our?
Resources or something like that?
Yeah, who, well, like for Karen, it should say a list of, these are the schools that reside within her boundaries. These are her-
Yeah, so we are actually updating a whole government page. And we'll link that on your, yeah, so it'll break it all down. I, I like that idea.
And I-
So it's kind of backwards and reverting the data.
I would also like listed on there, the committees that we all sit on.
Okay. We'll work on that together.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Do you have anything? No. All right. Okay. That's all I have. If there's no further comments, questions or anything, I will entertain a motion.
We adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Thanks.